Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to school, new school year. This is Brandywine School District's Board of Education Regular Meeting. Today is September 18th, 2023. We are live in the Brandywine High School Auditorium, also broadcasting via Zoom. Ms. Harris, can I have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Thank you, Ms. Harris. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Pigeon to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
In my life, of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands by nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all.
At this time, I would like to ask if there's a motion to approve the seating's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stock and a second by Mr. Heller to approve the seating's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That will lead us off this evening. We'll begin with our Spanish Heritage Proclamation. And I believe we have one of our wonderful students from the Tally Immersion Program, Zaya Doan.
El Distrito Escolar Brandywine es una comunidad inclusiva para todos nuestros estudiantes y el mes nacional de la herencia hispana es la mejor manera de mostrar nuestro orgullo hispano. Esta celebración comenzó en 1968 cuando la presidente Lyndon B. Johnson emitió una proclamación para celebrar la semana de herencia hispana. Posteriormente, el Congreso se celebrará la semana de la herencia hispana. Desde 1989 celebramos el mes nacional de herencia hispana porque honoran las culturas y contribuciones tanto de los hispanos como los latinoamericanos. El distrito escolar de Brandywine honra a nuestra comunidad diversa, en el cual 8% de la población de estudiantes esté ascendía latina y hispana. Y ofrece a nuestros estudiantes no hispanos la oportunidad de ampliar su conocimiento sobre el mundo que los rodea. Celebramos 21 países de habla hispana durante el mes de herencia hispana. Los 21 países tienen tradiciones y rituales únicos que realizan durante este mes especial. Esta mes brinda a los estudiantes de BSD la oportunidad de aprender más sobre los hispanoamericanos, pioneros que luchan por el progreso y la igualdad y honorar sus contribuciones a nuestro estado, comunidad y escuelas.
Zaya, thank you very much. Regrettably, I was a French student in high school, but that still sounded muy bien. So gracias and thank you for coming out and being an example for our Spanish immersion program and reading the proclamation for us.
Mr. Skorba, could I just ask again, what grade are you in? Eighth grade. Just made me think back to Mr. Rivera's presentation around the Spanish immersion program and how fluent our students are even at the middle school level. Fluency ratings that exceed high school students across the country and great evidence of that tonight. Thank you.
Next up, we have Dr. Kutch and Dr. Warner with an update on summer school coordinators.
Good evening, Board. Mr. Holder, we'd like to take some time out tonight to recognize our summer coordinators with whom without we could not have pulled off or really had a successful event with with our summer programming and servicing our students. So we would like to take the time to recognize these folks tonight in front of the Board. Thanks. For this Elementary Summer Academy and MLL Summer Academy, we'd like to give a huge thanks to our coordinators Gloria Matthews and Avery Sherad. Gloria and Avery made summer learning fun and safe. They organized daily crafts, visits from traveling field trips like Winifred and the Wilmington Police Department, and school-wide events such as Sports Day, as you can see in some of the pictures that are all displayed. And all of this while ensuring our students completed hands-on math and ELA activities. So thank you to Gloria and Avery. If we can give them a round of applause. They are not here tonight, but we still would like to recognize all their efforts and good work. For our eighth grade summer bridge program, we'd like to thank our coordinator Laura Carlson. Laura, if you would come on, make your way up. I saw you come in tonight. Laura enthusiastically headed our newest summer offering, the eighth to ninth grade summer bridge program. Not only did Laura ensure our students worked on algebra readiness and writing skills, she also organized daily guest speakers on transition topics such as your why with Howard Laws and wellness with Nurse Coons. Together, Laura and our teachers addressed such issues as working towards your goals and developing self-compassion, all while getting ready for their high school years. Let's give a round of applause for Laura. Thank you so much. Thanks, Laura. And you can go right over here. That's great. Thank you. Credit recovery. We'd like to thank our coordinator Gina D. Batista. She could not be here tonight, but Gina worked tirelessly to ensure that students needing credit recovery were very successful. Thanks to her efforts, 79% of referred courses were completed and students passed. So just thinking about that and our high school students and our graduation rates and such, and just to her with her help and support, putting our students in a great position to pass and graduate. I would be truly, truly remiss if I did not recognize Rebecca Shikowski. Rebecca is our coordinator of supplemental learning for the district. And really, through her, we were able to run these summer academy programs. She researched best practices, dug in deep, looking to see what was successful nationwide for these programs, even paying attention to attendance rates, putting in incentives and interventions to increase student attendance. Innovation, innovative programming, making sure that kids weren't just coming to what you would be perceived as summer school, right? Something remediation. It was more like going to camp, having fun, but also learning as a result of that. She spearheaded our summer bridge program for eighth grade to ninth grade, which was new this year and very successful, and also implemented a reading challenge for the summer, this sort of reading challenge where we truly, truly increased a great amount of students who read books. And honestly, if you could just understand the work behind the scenes of what has to happen with transportation, staffing, school nutrition, oversight, troubleshooting, working with multiple people across many different departments, Rebecca really was the star of the show. So Rebecca, thank you so much.
Okay. In addition, this summer, we had programs at our Bush Early Education Center. We serve 91 students who participated with an additional 25 students who participate in early childhood special education services itinerantly in local childcares. Teachers help their students maintain their current levels of progress on their IEPs while engaging in studies such as ocean animals, camping, red, white, and blue in the beach. So we thank our administrative staff who really take the leadership on our Bush Early Education Services in the summer to make it a great summer for our youngest learners.
Excellent.
Elementary Extended School Year, or ESY, took place this summer at Mount Pleasant Elementary School. We had a total of 214 pre-K through fifth grade students who were served. This was our second year with a pre-K to kindergarten transitional classroom, which was successful. And many students throughout this summer also experienced both learning and fun. And we have a picture of one of those students there sharing in his kid writing, "Dear teacher, I just want to say it's been a great summer. I hope I get to be in the next summer." So a huge thank you to Julie O'Connor and Matt Janicki for making it all happen. You can make your way up. And while they're coming up, also thank you for Emily DePietro, who's not here tonight, who provided coordinator support on numerous occasions at both this site and our entitlement. But we thank Julie and Matt for all of their efforts this summer and the certificate. All right. Elementary entitlement took place at Claymont Elementary School. A total of 120 students in kindergarten through fifth grade were served. Students also had the opportunity to participate in swimming and related arts. And our coordinators and others collaborated to organize an end of summer celebration, which included a slide and fire truck hoses courtesy of Tallyville Fire Company. And so a huge thank you to Darcy Toon and Tina Shelton for all your hard work this summer. Tina couldn't make it, but Darcy is here. On up. In addition, we had secondary extended school year and entitlement programming this year at PS Dupont Middle School. We had a total of 114 sixth through 12th graders served. They participated in swimming as well. Additionally, they were able to participate in additional exploration and preparation opportunities for employment and post-secondary education through division of vocational rehabilitation in the pre-ets program. Our coordinators made it fun with several theme days and recognition of our staff, including our teachers and paraprofessionals. So thank you to Dave Walls and Casey Lazartek, who are both here. Come on up. We appreciate your time and your commitment. Okay. And last but not least, our site program, our Skills for Independence Transition and Employment Program that houses our 18 to 22-year-old interns. They were able to work in various locations this summer, some of those up there, including Boskov's, Goodwill, Brandywine School District Graphics, Brandywine School District Cafeteria, and reimagining Chromebooks and repairs and the BSD Technology Department. That's just to name a few. We are also fortunate to have interns also be educational aides in the summer programs that we previously mentioned this summer. A quick shout out to some of our new community partners, WMPH 91.7, Acme and Boskov's are all new, and so we always appreciate those partnerships. And a big thank you to Heller Gebhardt, who's not here this evening, for coordinating the summer programs at site. And we also make her do our flower arrangement for tonight as well. So shout double duty on that for making those for us. But again, her efforts are very appreciated and we couldn't run those things without her. Thank you again to our coordinators. Heartfelt thank you. We wouldn't make it through summer without you. And if you could meet us in the lobby for a quick picture. And again, we appreciate you and hope you feel our thanks.
That'll take us into our superintendent's report, Mr. Holder.
President Skorba, Vice President Heller, members of the Board, I'm excited to share this update now that the new school year is underway. The excitement and hard work of our teachers and students is already so evident, and we can't wait to see what lies ahead this school year. Our students eagerly return to their schools for the start of the 2324 school year. Excitement could be felt throughout all BSD schools as students reconnected with classmates, met new teachers, and learned about the upcoming year. Each of our buildings did an outstanding job with organizing and opening this year. We compiled a special BSD Back to School 2023 video. Hope you enjoy it.
I had my same run from last year, so I'm pretty sure I'll see a lot of the kids from last year, but then just some just getting to see some of the new kids, you know? And they'll be really, you know, excited. And some of them probably never rode a bus before, so I'm pretty sure they'll enjoy the experience.
Hi, guys. Good morning. Good morning. How are you? Good morning. Hi, Nyla. Good morning.
Welcome back. Welcome back. Welcome back.
Good morning, Phoenix.
This is exciting. We're ready for a fabulous year here at Forward. Good morning.
How are you? Oh, man. Good morning.
I am so excited to welcome our kindergarten first grade everybody to Maple Lane. We are so excited to have you here today. Woohoo.
It's me, E-I-I-C.
Awesome job, buddy. Good morning.
I'll be accountable for all I do and respectful to me and you. I am a power of love. Watch me soar.
Morning, Sean.
Good morning.
Happy Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Come on in. Good morning, Eliza.
And we're gonna get ready for a story. Happy day.
First day of school. Good morning. Good morning. Have a good one. Great day here at Springer Middle School. Always.
All right, Tally students, let's go. First day of school. Come on in.
It's kind of like a reunion, right? It's like everybody coming back together, excited to see the staff, excited to see their peers. It's one of the more exciting days of school year. So we're excited to get them back and we're excited to get it going.
Just trying to think back to my first days of school when I was in K through 12. I don't think I remember hugging my principal one time or even being that enthusiastic to return, to tell you the truth. And to see our kids with those smiles on their faces and the degree to which our staff went to make them feel comfortable and welcome. But it's gonna be a great school year. You may have noticed in that last video that one of our schools had a pretty special visitor during the first week of school. Governor John Carney, as well as Secretary of Ed, Dr. Hollidick, and our Wilmington Learning Collaborative Executive Director, Dr. Burgos, were kind enough to greet and spend time with students at Harlan Elementary School. Carr Craft Elementary School continued their annual tradition of students forming an aerial pictorial as a means of building unity, expanding community, just having plain old fun. Students joined together to reveal the school's motivational theme for this school year, Shooting for the Stars.
Elbow to elbow. Kutch, this way, honey bear.
Since the summer of 2021, the district has been receiving Go Guardian Beacon alerts. Go Guardian is a software program that we have applied to the Chromebooks that students take home. They help provide protection in restricting access to inappropriate sites, but they also have a second purpose. They also have a keyword feature built in to the search function. Should students type in some of these key words, it can trigger an automatic alert to district personnel. I need to express a great thank you to several staff members at Tally Middle School and PS Middle School. Because twice in the past 10 days, we've received alerts to some keywords that indicated possible self-harm ideologies that students had typed in. Our administrative teams at those two buildings, as well as administrators at district office, responded to those calls after hours and on the weekend in one case. Just as a parent, as a community member, the value of such a program, coupled with selfless, dedicated employees willing to follow up on each and every alert, why? To keep kids safe. And we've often said in this district that student safety is our top priority. It's one thing to say it. It's another thing to put it in action. And I, again, would just like to express my deepest appreciation to the building administrators who responded outside the workday, as well as the district office administrators, who in some cases drove directly to children's houses to verify that that our students were indeed safe. Thank you to those individuals. All three Brandywine School District schools have been ranked among the best comprehensive traditional high schools in the state of Delaware for the 2324 school year by U.S. News and World Reports. We're thrilled for this recognition of our students and staff across these three high schools. Yet we realize that this achievement is indicative of the collective efforts put forth by the entire Brandywine School District community. While excited about this accomplishment, we're even more excited about what is yet to come as we strongly believe in our motto of continuous improvement, continuous growth, and the unlimited potential of each and all of our students. U.S. News ranks schools in a variety of categories, including college readiness, AP exam scores, math and reading proficiency, and graduation rates. These scores, while reaping accolades for us, we know don't meet our our standards. And we are focused again on that continuous improvement because we know we've got work to do in those areas. So again, keyed on the future and excited about the accomplishments of our students. Both Forward Elementary School and Harlan Elementary School recently hosted Special Breakfast in Honor of Grandparents. Grandparents' Day, grandparents and significant individuals in the lives of children were invited to a school breakfast alongside the students in their school's cafeteria. BSD is proud to celebrate and recognize the important contribution that grandparents and significant adults provide all of our students in terms of social emotional wellness, academic support, and confidence to do their best each and every day. I'd like to share with you a video of those events. I'd like to share with you a video of those events.
My mom's in the house. We want to celebrate grandparents because you know without you, we wouldn't have the children that we serve each and every day.
Today, we celebrated grandparents' day with our second annual grand breakfast here at Harlan. It was a wonderful event. We're super excited to celebrate our grands and are thanking them for trusting us with their children. And we know that it's going to be a fabulous school year.
Looking good.
We love including all the special people in our lives. This is our first celebration for grandparents' day. They are so important to all of us.
My mom and my pop-up are very special to me because they gave me all the love that I had when I was just a little girl.
Mount Pleasant High School Army JROTC Program held its annual 9/11 National Day of Remembrance Ceremony on Monday, September 11th. Students, staff, local law enforcement members, and first responders gathered for a program that included remarks by Mount Pleasant High School's Principal, Ms. Calderon Lacy, and members of the Mount Pleasant High School JROTC, along with a flag ceremony and the traditional playing of taps. It was a very solemn occasion. And I congratulate our students for their remembrance of the lives lost and the dedication of our EMS and local law enforcement. Lombardi Elementary School, Tally Middle School, and Springer Middle School recently joined forces to support SUN, S-U-N, Safe United Neighborhoods, for their 10th anniversary celebration in downtown Wilmington. Staff and students from all three BSD schools participated in a community walk for peace and safety in the neighborhood, which is home to many BSD students. And finally, fall sports are in full swing. And we have numerous exciting events, games, and recognitions to look forward to this season. On Thursday, September 14th, Brandywine High School's football team hosted Concord High School for a great evening filled with energy, sportsmanship, and most importantly, community. It was Military Appreciation Night, and the Bulldogs were outfitted in black and yellow custom uniforms that were supplied by the Army National Guard. Student fans from both schools wore patriotic attire to show their support for red, white, and blue. Pre-game festivities included the arrival of a Black Hawk helicopter. Both schools were supportive of their teams, and the evening was enjoyed by all in a highly competitive battle for bragging rights. Brandywine High School Senior Sean Supportk was honored at halftime for his enrollment in the military and his participation in boot camp over the summer. Before I close, Mr. Scrobott, I do have to draw attention to two individuals that were semi-missed in the recognition of summer programming. And those were actually the two individuals who did the presentation. Dr. Michelle Kutch, Dr. Nicole Warner, equally deserving of accolades, heavy loads on their plates during the regular academic school year, and without taking a breath dove into the programming, the staffing, the process of getting everyone in place for summer school, a yeoman's lift, and did it without a word otherwise. And just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the district. You're very meek and tend to shy away from that praise, but so well deserved and needed to make sure that the board and the community understand that you were a great piece of the success of our summer programming. Thank you. And with that, Mr. Scrobott and board members, community members, another reason to say I'm proud to be BSD.
Thank you, Mr. Holer. Any questions or comments from the board? No? Fantastic. Next up, we do have our public comment segment. We ask that our speakers and audience members be courteous and respectful to each other. This is your time to be heard during, heard regarding topics related to the Brandywine School District. Do not think we have any Zoom comments. We have one speaker live in the audience, Ms. Cassie Wisland. There's a microphone right behind you, and we'll give you three minutes. We'll restart your time, Cassie.
Good evening.
Heard you that time.
I'm Cassie Wisland. I've been a resident of the Claymont Brandywine School District for the past 70 years. My husband taught and coached at Concord High School. My two children went through the Concord's programs and play in a number of sports. My grandchildren have either gone through Concord or currently in Concord or about to begin there. We have always been very proud of the sports programs and have actively supported it. We all know that the lessons learned in sports, first they learn respect for each other and community. Besides the physical development provided by the daily workout of any sports, the students learn teamwork, social skills, and build self-confidence. Because of my involvement with my children and grandchildren, I've visited almost all school districts in the state, in the middle school, as well as the high school levels. I've seen great changes. I've seen all weather tracks and field of artificial turfs. I'm proud of the districts who have been able to provide these things for our children in the state. This is where Brandywine School District has fallen behind with other districts. I know sports are getting more and more expensive. Safe equipment is more and more. Uniforms cost more. Officials need higher salaries, banquet trophies. We should all come from far. It seems that the school district is paying less and parents are taking on more of the hardship. Should the sports clubs have pancake breaks, breakfasts, and car washes to support these sports? We, as parents, need to collectively think about these extra expenses. Now, for my major reason for being here, it is time to give up on a soccer field, a football field, field hockey venue, etc., for each of the three high schools, or more special fields for each sport divided among the district. I am very disappointed and embarrassed by the Brandywine School District. And for the past five years, the Concord Field Hockey has been condemned three times being unfit for the team to play by state officials. Not Brandywine, not Mount Pleasant, just Concord. The team doesn't play in front of any school friends and perhaps some parents because for our home game field is in Pennsylvania. How are the empty seats in Pennsylvania affecting these girls' memories and self-esteem? None of their students can come and watch. Three times in the last five years, no home field hockey for the girls at Concord. Who's the blame for this injustice? Shame on you as a district. The Concord Girls Field Hockey Teams practice on the tennis courts. What is wrong with this picture? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wisland. And that was our one and only comment this evening. Someone from the district will follow up with you. Most likely me. Leading on to board member liaison reports, starting with the DSBA Executive Board, Mr. Ackerman.
The Executive Board kicked off our season with a September 6th meeting. We had a full house. We were happy to welcome the Red Clay School District back to the Delaware School Board Association and sorry that Christina has decided not to continue as members. The organization is very good financially as we already planned for one district not to be involved with our organization. We went through the purpose of the Delaware School Board and also covered the annual report. We also had our Chief School Officer's report. Dr. Laramore from the Laurel District reported on some of the issues that they are working on as chiefs. And I think that we're kind of in sync with the chiefs. We ended with a roundtable discussion. Every district across the state has expressed concerns with being able to get sufficient staff. So it's not just, I mean, we're relatively good in Brandywine, but across the state, it is definitely a problem.
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. And I know, Ms. Gordon, we've redistributed the Legislative Committee. Is there a date for that next meeting or any other?
That will be in October.
October. Great. Thank you. District Finance Committee met on September 13th where we discussed the monthly financial report, as well as the financial position report in looking at the carried forward balances. The discussion moved towards potential referendum. And with that, I do have a statement from the Chair of the District Finance Committee, Mr. James Hamby, who's not be able, not able to be here with us this evening. I'll read that in just a minute, which is as kind of a reminder to the public that the District Finance Committee is primarily comprised of community members. We do have board representation, as well as district employee representation on there just to report back to the district and share any relevant information. You know, this was, Brandywine School District was the first district to establish such a committee to ensure fiscal transparency. It was kind of born out of the referendum process and having community feedback and oversight to the financial stewardship of those monies. Currently, the voting members of the District Finance Committee include our Chair, James Hamby, who you may be familiar with from many meetings here and his service to the district, as well as Chuck Landry, Chris Miliones, Jack Vineker, Ron Kimbrough, Victor Ferzetti, and currently, our district representative is Matt Auerbach. So I did want to share, like I said, unfortunately, Mr. Hamby was unable to attend this evening's meeting, but in his absence, he's asked that I share the following statement. "It is the recommendation of the District Finance Committee that the Brandywine School Board authorize the Chief Financial Officer to explore the necessary amounts needed for both an operating and capital referendum, understanding that the capital will be contingent on state approval of the certificates of necessity recently submitted. It is the consensus of the District Finance Committee that it is necessary in the right time to initiate the process of planning for a referendum in the spring of 2024." President Scrobott, Vice President Heller, and members of the board, it is important to note that the motion to recommend the board authorize the district to move forward with referendum planning was unanimously approved by the District Finance Committee. Having heard those comments on the recommendation, do I have a motion? From anyone on the board?
Still moved.
I have a motion from Ms. Stock and a motion from Reverend Dickerson. Motion to authorize the CFO to explore the necessary amounts needed for both an operating and capital referendum, contingent upon the state approval of the certificate of necessity recently submitted. Any discussion?
Mr. President, this is not listed as an action item on the agenda. It's listed as a discussion item.
I believe we can still take action on a recommendation from the committee to pursue. We're not taking any action other than to authorize the CFO to explore the numbers for a potential referendum. We're not voting on referendum. It's just advising the CFO to explore what those numbers would be and present to the board at a later date for action. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Holer, you'll get with our CFO. She's here this evening. So next month, we'll put on the agenda and item whatever your recommendation may be, and we can discuss what that will be.
Just a point of clarification. Next meeting is October 16th, I believe. And the state may not, may or may not by that time, have given us an answer on our certificates of necessity. The timeline that is out there is that by the end of October, districts will know the status of their request for certificates of necessity. So most likely, those numbers around what an ask may be in terms of operating and capital would most likely be in the November meeting instead of the October meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Health and Wellness Advisor Committee, Mr. Hell, oh, I'm sorry. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 10th. 11th. October 11th, 5:00 PM. Zoom link will be posted on our website as normal, but we'll meet in person at District Office in the board conference room. Health and Wellness Advisory Committee, Mr. Heller.
There's been no meeting since we last met.
Thank you. Maintenance Advisory Committee.
Also, no meeting since we last met. Our next meeting for that is October 10th at the new maintenance facility on Pennsylvania Avenue.
Fantastic. Reverend Dickerson, no parents advisory committee has been switched up, but is there anything in the last month? I think the next meeting is October.
I believe we have a conflict with that date. And so...
All right. We'll check with, between you and Ms. Stock. We'll coordinate on that date and post it on our website. Ms. Pigeon Parent Council for Students with Disabilities.
Yeah, so the nominations for the process for representatives from each of our schools and programs have been completed by the principals of the students. A letter is currently being sent to the nominated parents and guardians on the 22nd of September. The first meeting is scheduled for October 10th from 6:15 to 8 o'clock at Mount Pleasant Elementary School in the multipurpose room. So those families that were nominated will get that information and hopefully be able to attend.
Thank you. Wilmington Learning Collaborative, Reverend Dickerson.
The Wilmington Learning Collaborative, our new executive director has certainly pulled up, rolled up her sleeves and has been extremely busy for the last, since our last meeting. Some of her, some of her accomplishments to date have included completing the, her first round of principal conversations. And the purpose of these meetings is to essentially get a high level of where each individual schools are and helping her to shape the understanding of school priorities and needs. She's also attended several back-to-school events to include Bancroft to welcome their new principal, Stubbs Block Party, in addition to, again, the first round of initial principal meetings and school visits. To date, the principal meetings include Shortledge, Byard, Lewis, Warner, Johnson, and again, Shortledge School. She also visited several Christina schools by, to include Byard, Stubbs, Pulaski, and again, Bancroft. She also, as you saw, visited our Harlan School, which is our school of the Brandywine School District. She joined, she was joined by Governor Carney. which is our school of the Brandywine School District. She joined, she was joined by Governor Carney and Secretary Hollidick for the back-to-school visits, where they were able to greet students and visit classrooms. She also shared that her enriching conversations that she's had with the school's math specialist and in making an attempt to better understand the existing instructional coaches and content specialists, and ensuring that they're being maximized across all of the WLC schools. The, her first day at the district office took place within the Brandywine School District, where she met with curriculum talent and data teams. The takeaways from these conversations informed her scheduling and follow-up meetings. She, at the end of August, she visited the Land Academy, the Land, excuse me, the Leadership Academy, which is the model to which we are adopting the Wilmington Learning Collaborative. This provided her lens into, she provided them with a lens into the WLC and what would be most beneficial in the execution of the landscape analysis of the WLC. In September, the priorities and action items will include spending time with principal supervisors to better understand coaching and feedback models, supports, and the evaluation process. Working with district liaisons to craft a proposed set of the ELT, the Educational Learning Team Guidelines, and finally, a deep dive into the WLC budget with key district and state fiscal personnel. And the purpose of this is to ensure the alignment around how funds will flow to support programmatic goals of the WLC. Our next meeting will be tomorrow night, September the 19th, 6:00 PM at the Bancroft School, recently renamed Morris Pritchett Academy. This concludes the report for the Wilmington Learning Collaborative.
Thank you, Reverend Dickerson. Any additional board member reports or comments? Ms. Harris, I believe you...
I do have a question. There was a suggestion last month about forming communication.
Yeah, I hadn't forgotten that.
Group, I was just wondering if there was a discussion.
So Ms. Harris, I sent you the list on the revised committees. But between now and then, also, to Mr. Heller's point, last month, we did discuss the Communications Committee and reviving that with a focus on the referendum. So in anticipation of the CFO's recommendation come November, over the course of the next month before October, Ms. Pigeon, we'll get together and we'll work on a draft proposal for the committee, setting out the directives, and start to identify members or a process to engage the public as part of that committee. Thank you. Anything else on the board?
Just one clarification. The Parent and Citizens Advisory Committee will meet October the 12th. It's, I believe it's the next meeting that had the conflict.
Fantastic. Thank you. I think that was it on committees. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion, Mr. Ackerman, and a second, Mr. Heller, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the monthly personnel report as discussed in exec session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Stock, second, Mr. Ackerman, to approve monthly personnel report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept student matters as discussed in executive session?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion, Mr. Heller, second, Mr. Ackerman, to approve student matters as discussed in exec session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Takes us on to old business. Just an update on the vacant board seat. As we mentioned last month and the month before, longtime board member, Ms. Karen Gordon of nominating Area E, submitted her resignation from the board effective August 1st. Delaware Code Title 14 outlines the process for filling this vacancy of a board member for any cause other than the expiration of their term. Since our last meeting, the application window has closed, and we do have seven community members who have stepped up and applied to fill this vacancy. The board is in receipt of those copies of all seven candidates, showing their letters of interest and resumes. And we have also started to receive the required background checks, which, you know, can typically take three to six weeks in their processing. So just as an update, in the coming weeks, you know, the next week or so, the board will reach out to the candidates to set a time for interviews. And barring any delay of the background check information, it's the board's intent to take action on the open position at our next regular board meeting on October 16th to make that selection. Thank you for that. Any comments or questions on? New business. Ms. Florrie? Monthly financial report and financial position report.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of the board, members of the audience and those on Zoom. I have two reports tonight. The first is the monthly financial report. And we've redesigned the report a little bit to compare this point in time this year to this exact point in time last year. And it's tracking exactly as the budget has laid out thus far. For local revenues, we're at 15.9% local revenues received, and that's, of course, because the tax bills don't go out until the beginning of July, with a due date of September 30th. So those payments, that 15.9% is really early payments, which are ahead slightly of where we were last year. State funds were at 73, 75.3% received. Where state funds and categorical state funds were at 87.5%. So right on target, even a little bit ahead of anticipated receipts based on some of those early payments. Similarly, on the expenditure side, we're tracking and designed the report to compare this point in time this year versus the exact point in time last year. So that is 23.26% expended this year versus 24.5% expended. So it's slightly down from where we were last year. We always highlight in yellow. These are very difficult to see, obviously. But you can certainly see the yellow, and we highlight the yellows that are negative. This one is negative only because it wasn't in the budget, but made the decision to keep it tracked separately, and these are our JROTC revenue payments that we get for the program and wanted to keep that in a separate operating unit. So it's, it will be a recommendation in the December budget to keep a separate line item, but we've left it there just to track against it. But overall, spending is right on target to where we'd expect to be at this point in the year. Obviously, this report is through August 31st, so really only two months into the fiscal year. It's, it's early. But the, the last reports in the, in the finance package go through prior year appropriations and then ESER. ESER 2 is ending, so you'll see the balance. It would be not the next, the next one is ESER 2 and 3 together. And then we isolate ESER 2 is the next one, and you should see that balance be zero at the end. And so ESER 2 is fully encumbered, and we have until, I'm sorry, November 30th to fully liquidate that last small encumbrance. So ESER 2 is essentially done. And we've moved on to finalize. This is the last year that we'll have ESER 3. And there's five, just, just over $5.8 million remaining in ESER 3. And then all will be fully expended by 9:30 of next year of 2024. The last page of the finance report, and based on Mr. Ackerman's comments last month, changed the wording on this slightly. This has always been part of the finance monthly report, and it's the cash flow. And really, it's the estimated ending balance as of June 30th. And so the projected balance is the one, again, I apologize, it's very small and hard to read. But all over on the right on the yellow, that projected ending balance is $6 million, $6,099,397. The one below it is, we rephrased it to say benchmark target of expenditures through 9:30. What we need to end June 30th with to get through the receipt of taxes can vary, because you can have a three-pay month in August, July, September. And so it's not always going to be exactly the same year to year. We've also, because of the additional state funds we got from those additional units last year, started with a little bit more state money this year. So there are years where you could need a little bit more or a little bit less this year, because we don't have any three pays, happens to be a little bit less. But the committee talked at length about keeping that benchmark target at 8.85 million, which shows that our projected June balance, and this, this goes to that three-year forecast, this goes to the finance committee's discussions on why we need a referendum, because ending the year at $6 million while on target is really not enough and means that we're spending more than, or our expenditures exceed our revenues, which, which is a function not of overspending. It's a function of declining revenues because of the, the tax base, because of the way taxes are collected without an increase. Because that referendum was set in 2016 and we're still spending on that same amount. So this last page of the cash flow hasn't expected, and this matches the budget. It hasn't changed, but it's a six, just about $6.1 million. The, when the finance committee met last week, they did vote to approve this report. And again, it went into that conversation of its time, and it's what led to the motion that Mr. Scrobott read earlier.
Going back to the ESER money, I remember there was some discussion. I don't know if it was ESER 2, ESER 3, but in, from the onset, it had to be used by a certain timeframe, the ESER money. Was there, what was the conversation about the liquidation, and were we getting extensions from the state, or are we good on?
There's a possibility that districts had the option to apply for an, apply for a liquidation extension. We did not. The, because there's ESER 2 and ESER 3 simultaneously, the, we believed that those, that things that we have encumbered, and there was, it's only a small amount left, will be fully expended by the liquidation date of 11:30. The ones we're looking really closely at are the ones in the facilities department, where the lead time on some of that large equipment, that HVAC equipment. Now, I know a lot of it has recently been delivered, but that's the one we're going to really look closely at. And if we need an extension, it would be next spring that we start talking about a liquidation extension, meaning we've ordered it, it's encumbered, we, you know, it's on the books. But whether or not it'll be truly expended and paid by that 11:30, 2024 liquidation will be a question, but it's really not a question for ESER 2 at this point.
Right. Just a function of invoicing and delivery and things out of our control with mostly, yeah.
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
But intentionally, when we were looking at that intentionally, we put it in ESER 3 because that would, that had the longer window.
Correct. Thank you.
Quick question. The, how long has that target balance been, 8.85 million? Do we know when the last time that was adjusted?
I don't know the answer to that. I can go back and look. It's certainly, it's certainly been in place since I came here. It's what I inherited. And it was, it was on and reasonable. I, I don't know, I mean, I can look back over the years and certainly report that as part of the, the referendum conversation. I don't know the answer.
I was asking, I was wondering, does the District Finance Committee look at that number often? I'm just curious.
It's part of the monthly...
Expenses are increasing. I was wondering if that numbered.
It, that's been part of, the cash flow's been part of the monthly report for ages. So it, it's been a part of it. I don't know exactly how many years. But yes, I mean, it's not new that they're looking at that target. And when I get to the next report, you'll see, it's also been a target of the state-required reports as well in a different format. And, and those, I think, have been in place for at least 10 years, the financial position reports that the state requires.
Do I have a motion to accept the monthly financial report for August 30th, 2023, and the financial position report subject to audit?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion, Reverend Dickerson, second, Ms. Stock. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Florrie.
I have one more.
Oh. Oh, you didn't do the financial position report. So I guess we should restate our motion for just the monthly financial report for August 30th, 2023. Ms. Dickerson, do you still make that motion?
Yes.
Ms. Stock, do you still second?
Yes.
All those in favor for the monthly financial report subject to audit? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Sorry about that.
Oh, no problem. The, the monthly finance report, and then this is the financial position report. This is as of August 31st, 2023. This is a state-required report. There are three of them. So I'll be back two more times within the fiscal year. The next two, not this one, but the next two, will be projecting that June 30th balance. Just like I said, our cash flow does all along in our monthly report. This one, however, is even more immediate, and it's somewhat arbitrary, but it'll make sense. This is projecting what is the October 15th balance going to be. And that's really the trigger to the state that says, if you have less than a month's worth of payroll, then, then financially, you would require potentially a float loan, and you're not going to make, make it until you receive all the tax money in October. So this one is, is a very short window of projecting what is our balance through October 15th. And our report, and, and so it's not going to match anything, even in terms of the cash flow, which projects the month-end balance because it's mid-month. But this one, again, says we're, we have sufficient funds. We're okay in this current fiscal year. An estimated one month of payroll, that's a two-pay month, not a three-pay, is $4.4 million. That's what's in yellow. But our projected 1015 cash balance would be 5.1 million. So assuming there's one more pay at the end of October, we would come into the end of October and the full receipt of the year's worth of taxes sufficient to get through and spend through June 30th. And then I'll come back in February, and then again in May, to talk about what's the estimated June balance.
I know on the earlier report, the revenue was higher compared to this time last year. Hypothetically, without that increase in revenue, if we had collected the same amount, would we still have been in the as-good-a-position? Well, not as-good, because we had so much more revenue this year, but would we still have been within?
Yeah, it's a timing thing, because I can tell you September's is now down because August was up. And so there, there were a lot, for whatever reason we talked about, was it, is it reassessment? Is it because the tax bills were lower because we reduced our tax rate? The county also had a one-time tax reduction. So did people pay early because they were so excited to see that the tax bills were lower? But August receipts were higher than they had been the year significantly, about $1 million higher than they were that point in time last year. But it did correct in September, so it's, it's lower. It doesn't change the overall estimate for the year. It's just the timing of when people were making those early payments.
Makes sense. Thank you. Any additional comments?
May I ask a question? So this financial position report looks different than previous financial position reports. Same information, though, right?
It's the same format from the state, same information, just in a different format, yes.
Okay.
And different dates.
Oh, you know what? If you, could you click on the second tab? I think I gave you the Excel document. Is that the one you're looking for? Yep. So I gave you the, the spreadsheet and all, where all the numbers were, and this is the summary page.
Thank you, because I was trying to compare and I was getting a little confused.
Sure. That's all the, the raw data that goes into it, and that's the, I didn't PDF it. I apologize.
Any additional comments? Do I have a motion to accept the financial position report subject to audit?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Pigeon, second, Mr. Ackerman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The only thing I didn't say that I should have is the Finance Committee also approved the report unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
General information and meeting dates. Our next regular Board Meetings are scheduled for Monday, October sixteenth, Monday, November thirteenth, Monday, December eleventh, all here at Brandywine High School. Any final comments or questions from the Board? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, Ms. Pigeon, second, Reverend Dickerson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time and participation this evening. Well, this concludes our September meeting.